Welcome, everyone, to the September 1st, 2022 meeting of the Delaware County Board of Commissioners. Would you please join me in reciting the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm Barb Lewis, President. To my right is our Vice President Jeff Benton. To my left is Fellow Commissioner Gary Merrill, our Administrator Tracy Davies, our Deputy Administrator Don Houston, and our Clerks Jennifer Wallraven and Sarah De novo. We can begin.
Resolution number 22-744. In the matter of approving electronic records of proceedings from regular meeting held August 29th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, vote.
Vote on motion 22-744. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
We have no public comment this morning. Resolution number 22-745. In the matter of approving purchase orders, then announce certificates and payments of warrants and batch numbers CMA PR 0831 and memo transfers and batch numbers MTA PR 0831.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, vote.
Vote on motion 22-745. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number 22-746. In the matter of approving travel expense requests.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, vote.
Vote on motion 22-746. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number 22-747. In the matter of accepting the treasurer's report for the month of July 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, vote.
Vote on motion 22-747. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number 22-748. In the matter of changing the location of the Delaware County Board of Commissioners session for Monday, September 19th, 2022, to the Delaware County Fairground Stage by the Coliseum.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Oh, boy, it's that time again. Okay. Vote.
Vote on motion 22-748. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number 22-749. In the matter of canceling the Delaware County Commissioners session for Thursday, September 22nd, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, vote.
Vote on motion 22-749. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number 22-750. In the matter of approving a public safety training agreement with the City of Columbus Police Department of Public -- sorry, Columbus Department of Public Safety, the Delaware County Board of Commissioners and the Delaware County Sheriff's Office for sending Delaware County Sheriff's Office cadets to the Columbus Police Department Academy.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Thank you, Dean Steltzer, Delaware County Sheriff's Office. This is the agreement we have to get approved with the City of Columbus to send recruits to their academy. This is for five deputies, cost of about $28,000. Something we have to do. We can't always get into the academy. We've been limited here recently, but we were able to get five candidates into this.
Yeah, as last I heard, there was difficulty getting them in.
Yeah, they hadn't. I think the last academy didn't accept any. I think we only had two the time before that, so it's been a challenge.
Boy, that's too bad. That's...
We've got a backlog, that's for sure, of trying to get candidates in into schools.
Yeah. Yes. Vote, please.
Vote on motion 22-750. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Thank you.
Resolution number 22-751. In the matter of approving grant awards for the Delaware County Trail Assistance Program.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Good morning, Scott Sanders. I'm the Delaware County Regional Planning Commission, but today I'm representing the Trail Committee, which is made up of members across the county that seeks applicants for your trail grant program. And then we go through those applications and we determine which ones we're recommending to you for payment. This is the fourth year of this program. It's a two-year cycle, and it's paid after the work is complete. And this is a match program, so these have all been matched with matching funds. So of the five that submitted applications, three were deemed to not be qualified because they were too small and didn't contribute to a larger corridor, which is what we're trying to accomplish. So the two for funding would be Liberty Township for $17,875 and Orange Township for $82,125. So we're recommending that those be granted to those communities.
Specifics on those two?
The one in Liberty is on Home Road, and it's a very small gap between trails that already exist in Concord and then moving into Powell. And it'll be part of a much larger -- once Home Road gets improved by the county engineer, there'll be a much larger connection. And then the other is the north side of Old Powell Road in Orange Township where that was recently widened by the county. And so it's going to take a lot more than that to pave that entire length. But that'll make a really nice connection between South Old State and Walkerwood, which provides access to the multiple schools and then farther down to Belle Canyon.
Okay. Now, the ones that do not get the grants, you notify them and explain to them the why?
Yeah, and we've already done that.
Okay. And they were understanding?
Yes. Yeah, and we -- there are other grant programs that the preservation parks provides, and so we recommend that they seek those other options. And we always commend them for applying, but just admit that it's not part of the program.
Yeah, the trail system is so important. And residents love it.
It's bits and pieces, but we're trying to pull it together.
Yeah, and we've made a lot of progress. I mean, a lot of progress in the county in the last few years.
Mm-hmm. Vote, please.
Vote on motion 22-751. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Thank you.
Resolution number 22-752. In the matter of accepting the recommendations of the Delaware County Tax Incentive Review Councils for tax year 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tracy Davies, County Administrator. On August 22nd, the County Tax Incentive Review Councils met to discuss the current and active TIFs, enterprise zones, and community reinvestment authorities. Each TIF, EZ, and CRA was reviewed for compliance with its payments, and they met the payments and all of the requirements associated. The resolution before you is to recommend the continuance of each for the current taxable year.
Okay. Any questions? Vote, please.
Vote on motion 22-752. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Next on our agenda is Jane Hawes.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jane Hawes, Director of Communications. We had had before us a request from one of our community enhancement grant applicants to transfer the grant award that they received for an original project to a subsequent one. What it turned out was that the original project, one of their donors donated all the material supplies that would have been used -- that our grant money would have been used to purchase. They didn't ask for it, but they received it from this donor. So they asked if they could instead transfer to a different project. And I did provide to you sort of their executive summary of the new project, and it's basically to extend fencing in their pasture. And I'll just briefly summarize. They would be able to provide more grazing area, lowering the amount of hay that they have to purchase for their horses. This will enable them to maintain an affordable price for their programming and also allow them to install a permanent -- some permanent barriers along their driving trails. And they just emphasized that these programs are offered to all residents of Delaware County and the surrounding area. I know they have a particular focus on veterans and first responders. So I don't know if you have any additional questions or thoughts on whether you're comfortable with transferring. They did offer to return the money. They have not cashed the check that they received, so.
I just appreciate getting the background. I thought it was important that we have some justification explanation, and you provided that, so I can support it.
Yes.
Yeah, again, this is a great organization. They do really nice work, and they had found funding for the initial project elsewhere. Good for them and good for the community because there's another project that we can fund that will continue to expand their services. So, great.
Right. I'm glad that we can help them out, too. They do a wonderful job. I've heard great reports, in particular as to how they help veterans.
Okay.
And so...
All right. Well, I will communicate that to them, and then we just have some paperwork that we have to fulfill on our end before we can
Okay.
allow it to be completed, so.
Okay. Thanks for doing the homework on it.
Yep, sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane.
Item number 12. Resolution number 22-753. In the matter of approving the transfer for appropriation for the prehospital care board.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Morning, Commissioners. Jeff Fishel, Director of VMS for Delaware County. What you have in front of you is a request for appropriations to cover the purchase of two high-fidelity CPR mannequins. The prehospital care board is hosting an organization from Seattle to come in and teach something called the Resuscitation Academy. It's a high-performance CPR model that's in the unified protocol that we all operate under, and it's just another effort of collaboration and combined training that we're trying to pursue through the prehospital care board.
Great. Another good project that the prehospital care board is doing in collaboration, so definitely support it. Any other questions, comments? Vote, please.
Vote on motion 22-753. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye. Now, you're -- you know, all the water got acknowledged. Do you want to share that with us, or...
Yeah, we finally won something. Texas Tech won the most spirited college football fan base. So I was so proud, I shared it with Commissioner Merrill, and he made some comments I won't share. But so...
You want to share what I said?
He wanted to know if it was number one in cow roping. So I said, no, that would have been the University of Texas. But so, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution number 22-754. In the matter of approving change order number one to the agreement between the Delaware County Board of Commissioners and John Aramo &amp; Sons Incorporated for the Peach Bowl Forest Main Improvement Project Contract number 2-2020.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Morning, Commissioners. Tiffany Magg, Director of Environmental Services. So this is a net deduct change order. We're closing the project out. It's the only change order that we've had on the project. We're reducing the contract price by $78,375, and then we'll proceed to close the project out.
Okay. Vote, please.
Vote on motion 22-754. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number 22-755. In the matter of awarding a bid to Nicholas M. Savco &amp; Sons for the Berlin Business Park Forest Main Project for the Delaware County Regional Sewer District.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
So this is the notice of award so that we can allow Savco to start ordering materials and getting things moving on their end. We'll have the contract on probably next Thursday session if we can get it prepared in time. They bid a total project cost of 3.41 million. Our engineer's estimate was 3.84 million, so we're pleased with this bid and ready to get the project moving.
All right.
Yeah, good. It's important.
Yes.
It's an important project, as we all know.
Yeah.
Right.
That's great to see it moving along.
Yeah.
Vote, please.
Vote on motion 22-755. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so, no, I'll get up here. I didn't know if you were going to announce it or me. So this is the monthly update for the month of August for our development approval items that the county administrator approved. We've had a handful of plan approvals. Things are seeming to pick back up in our office. The first one is the 3637 Pump Station and Forest Main Project. It's located just on the eastern branch of Allen Creek, near 3637. This is an apartment complex that will actually pump their flow east over to, if you can see my mouse here, over to a pump station that we have along Africa Road. And then they'll actually, at the same time, install a forest main that's going to be hanging on the bridge for our future use when we have the Central Allen Creek Treatment Plant. So it's an important project for us. We actually partnered with ODOT to be able to get approval to hang a smaller forest main on the bridge for this apartment complex, at the same time, a larger forest main on the bridge for our future use to avoid any Army Corps impacts on that side. Then we also have Berkshire Crossing, Section 1. This is along Wilson Road. It's an American Homes for Rent project that's going in. It'll actually flow into the North Star Treatment Plant. And then Ryan Creek is located down off of 23, another apartment complex. This is near Shanahan Road in 23. And then we have the ravines at Hoover. This is a Romanelli project, 56 single-family lots near Vinmar. Sarah Crossing is another condo complex, 231 multifamily condos in Liberty Grand. Liberty Grand continues to be moving at a pretty quick pace. And then Woodcrest Crossing is an MI development, 35 lots in this section. We have Berkshire Crossing, Section 2. This one, we also have a subdividers agreement down below. This is 100 single-family lots in Sections 1 and 2. And this is what, like I just mentioned, this is that American home rental. And then finally, we have Woodcrest Crossing, which is 35 lots by MI, which we've explained that one as well. So that one continues to move, the Woodcrest, as well as the Liberty Grand. And we've been seeing those on session quite a bit. I think they're, you know, really progressing through their sections pretty quickly, and then a handful of new apartments and condos going up. So things are still clipping along at a pretty good pace.
Right.
Any questions on any of those?
No, you're busy.
Great.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Tiffany.
Thank you.
I bring it to us to item number 16. Resolution number 22-756. In the matter of approving a supplemental appropriation.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Good morning, Commissioners. Karen First, Fiscal Manager. We're asking for your approval on this resolution so Regional Sewer can utilize ARPA funds for the Berlin Business Park Forest Main and the Pump Station projects.
Okay. Vote, please.
Vote on motion 22-756. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Next, we have a presentation from Morpsy.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning. Thank you.
Well, good morning again, Commissioners. Thank you so much for having me. My name is Megan Stein. I'm the Economic Development Officer at Morpsy. I've been with the agency now about four months, so still relatively new, but happy to be joining the agency during such an exciting time. I'm here today to talk to you about Morpsy's effort to secure an economic development district for the region. So Delaware County was a big part of, an important part of receiving the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. We call it the SEDS at Morpsy, which is really the first piece of the puzzle for the Economic Development District designation.
Your cohort just walked in.
Your cohort, you had a coworker.
Yes. This is my boss, Thea Ewing.
An important coworker.
She's the chief at Morpsy, so happy to have her with me here today.
Welcome.
Thank you. And so today, you know, just talking a bit about the Economic Development District and what exactly that means. Economic Development Districts, they're areas designated by the U.S. Economic Development Administration, and they really bring together the counties in the region to help support economic development and growth. As I mentioned, the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy was approved just earlier this year, which is a major piece of the puzzle. The -- I want to talk to you a bit about the role of the Economic Development Districts in the Columbus region. The roles are really to help administer funding from the U.S. EDA. And once our region is designated a development district, really what happens is the EDA unlocks this toolbox for our region, which has both technical assistance and access to additional funding that we've never seen before. I'll show you here a map of the entire United States and then Ohio as well, and you'll see kind of where these economic development districts have traditionally been dedicated, and it's really most of the Appalachian regions of Ohio. There are a number of benefits, as I mentioned, with the Economic Development Districts. There's, you know, the theme you'll see on many of these is funding, is access to that funding and access to that technical assistance that the region will have. There are two main types of EDA grant programs. There's the Economic Adjustment Assistance Program, and then you can see the range of grants there, and then the Public Works Program as well, and there are the ranges there as well. There are some requirements of an Economic Development District designation, and it's -- one of the main requirements is that at least one of the areas in the region qualifies under the economic distress category. And kind of looking at that from both angles, it's good that we have that, you know, an area that qualifies, but it's also kind of an unfortunate. So it's -- that's a major piece there. And then, as I mentioned earlier, the approved Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. And these are just kind of the different pieces of that strategy, and that strategy is posted on the Morpsy website. And here's that map I was mentioning just a moment ago. You can see the state of Ohio has really the districts designated that are in the Appalachian region, and Morpsy is working to become the first of the more urban regions of the state to secure the development district. That said, I will say that the other major metros are not far behind us. Toledo, Dayton, Cleveland, Cincinnati, they're all recognizing this need to become a designated district, and they've actually reached out to Morpsy because we're a little bit ahead of them to kind of ask questions and figure out how we can work together. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention another thing that we're doing at Morpsy yet this year is updating the competitive advantage projects and their profiles for Morpsy. So you can see here, we've got five major projects in Delaware County that are highlighted. So we'll really be working with the county yet this year to make sure that these -- oh, sorry about that. That these projects are still the top priorities of the county. And if funding has been received or partial funding's been received for any of these projects, then we're, you know, we're more than happy to update them or reprioritize them. So again, this list will get updated yet this year. I also just wanted to mention there are a number of funding opportunities that are available now. The deadline is quickly approaching for some of these, but these are funding opportunities through the Bipartisan Infrastructure Law. And so we've got the streets, Safe Streets for -- Streets and Roads for All, the Clean School Bus Program, and the Bridge Investment Program. I also, you know, will just mention again that once the Economic Development District designation is received, this list of funding opportunities is only going to get bigger. So it's exciting to see that there's funding available right now through the BIL, but there's more funding yet to come. So our key takeaways for today, you know, I just really want to highlight that the Economic Development District designation will bring increased regional collaboration and provide more opportunities for economic recovery projects, infrastructure, transportation, and utility support. With an Economic Development District designation, Delaware and other counties will gain more access to federal funding. And moving forward, the 11 counties of the region, we're asking each of the counties that we're visiting on our summer tours, as we've coined it, which has been happening in July and August and now September, we're asking for a letter of support from each of the counties. It's not, you know, committing you financially to anything. It's really just saying that Delaware County is a part of this Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, and you want to continue to be engaged through our designation process through the EDA. So there have been counties that we've visited that need a resolution to sign a letter of support, so we're happy to help support that. I also do have copies of a template letter of support, which I can share with you all as well. But I think that wraps it up for my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions, and thank you again so much for having us today.
Thank you. Pardon me, any questions?
Thank you, Thea.
Yeah, I have a few questions.
Absolutely.
The...
Thank you.
Thank you. What would be the downside to becoming an EDD? Are there any negatives, any concerns?
That's a great question, Commissioner Benton. Thank you for asking that. No downsides, really. really. Honestly, all this will do is bring awareness to our region about the importance of the designation. Thea, I don't know if you have any thoughts about any downsides that would come along with becoming an EDD?
Yeah, most of the regions in Ohio that have gotten it...
Could you just introduce yourself, just for the record?
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioners. I'm Thea Ewing. I'm with the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission, Chief Regional Development Officer.
Thank you.
And yeah, I don't really see any downsides. I really haven't heard anything. I mean, of course, that there is more reporting and federal oversight that we have, but we meet all that criteria at MORPC already. It would be much harder for, say, like, when Columbus to take this on, because they would have to have all the back office piece. We're already moving a lot of that stuff through. So it actually makes sense that it's us and maybe not an entity that would have to stand all that up, and then we're here running, doing those things, and then we're a good grant, I guess, channel for the region for this and other opportunities like it.
You'd mentioned economic distress is one of the factors that weighs in on funding decisions, and you said that we do have an area of economic distress?
In our region, yes.
In the region we do?
Yes. Pickaway and Marion Counties both qualify under that economic distress category.
Okay, because we are the, I think, the shining star of the Midwest, not just Ohio, you know, and central Ohio, so.
Can I follow up with a statement? So I have a question, because related to that, I can interrupt. So we are often excluded because of our situation in Delaware County. Will this allow us, on average, to be included in areas where we would not normally have been included?
Well, I think if it means that because you don't typically have areas of distress, yeah, this is, I mean, if you're creating jobs for people in this region, and regardless of where they live, but you're creating those jobs, certainly, I think there's opportunities, especially if any of your current employers become in harm's way. For instance, like Lordstown, when they were repositioning the plant there, these dollars helped reposition that plant. Or if you have a special training program happening, maybe to help people do, start working at a new tech facility, this might be a great way to bring in dollars for that. And then, you know, the numbers we would use would be broad, right, for the region, because you would be serving the region in that.
Because we do, I was going to kind of follow on to my question, but Commissioner Merrill addressed it really. You know, we get Delaware County, the frustration I have is Delaware County gets short-changed consistently at the State House, whether it's schools, or roads, or bridges, other economic development funding initiatives. And so if this could help us, because, you know, we're, the environment, the jobs we're creating here benefit the entire region, not just Delaware County, and we need funding for the Second Interchange. As the CAP shows, there are a whole bunch of projects that are huge projects that can really benefit the region. And so if this enables us to become higher priority for funding opportunities, then I think that would be great. You know, you're probably aware of the Berlin Business Park, and we've made significant progress on that, but we're not finished yet, and one of the key components for that is the Second Interchange at 3637, which is, I think, our number one priority in the CAP. And, you know, we need action from the state, and we need funding, and so on, and that would enable the Berlin Business Park to truly develop, which is even a bigger factor now that Intel has been announced, because it's definitely in the zone of opportunity for Intel, which again is a regional, even bigger than regional project, economic development project. Would this type of funding include land acquisition, or is it strictly road and bridges and infrastructure?
It's acquisition, roads, bridges, infrastructure, planning dollars, even, yeah, even workforce development focus, so maybe even the training program, so programming, essentially. So they really have a little bit of everything. One of the things I was thinking of, like, for instance, down in Fairfield County, they've already asked for one of these grants and got it, and it was planning related to the entrance to one of the facility. Actually, there was a PPE provider, because we're still operating off of the very first set of funding, which was attached to coronavirus funds, but they were able to go in after that. But this is a program that's gone on forever. But yeah, they were able to tap into that for some intersection improvements that they needed to do. So that's a sign that, you know, and they're not highly, I wouldn't call them highly distressed either. They're probably not in the same position you are, but I feel like they were competitive.
One of the things that you mentioned was that there's $37 million of funding available. Where did I see that number?
Yeah, that is on Slide 5 there, yes. So that is nationally, that's what's available from the Economic Development Administration. Commissioner Benton, as you mentioned, I mean, the real benefit of this designation is that the EDA is now looking at the whole Columbus region rather than the need of one particular county. So it's really important to develop this district designation. So the EDA looks at the region as a whole rather than those specific areas.
Okay, because 37 million, when you spread it over the whole country, isn't going to be, you know, probably provide a whole lot of money to the region.
That's a good point, Commissioner Benton, but I will say, this is what's available now. So every year, we're seeing changes to programs, and the EDA has traditionally seen, I would say, an uptick in recent years.
Oh, yeah.
Funding coming from the federal government. So, you know, this is what we know right now, but, you know, it could be additional funding, different types of funding coming down the pipe as we come out of this kind of post-pandemic life here.
Yeah, during the pandemic era, the EDA got a big shot in the arm, and then they also started doing more, I think they anticipated the economic needs that follow what we've just been through, and they've sent a lot of money that way. For the first time that, as long as I've worked with economic development, we have a dedicated Ohio person that we can actually call, not just a Midwestern person, and they live in the state of Ohio. So signs are pointing in the right direction for us, certainly. The federal government's making investments just beyond even sending us grants. They're actually giving us someone to call, so I think that's also a sign in the right direction.
Now, the Public Works Program is, where a lot more money is available, but that's where you have to have a distressed community to participate in that. Do they score it by how much of your region is distressed, or just the fact that you have a distressed community in your region? Because I imagine we'll probably score a pretty low percent of the region being distressed.
Yeah.
Or do you know at this point? Maybe too soon?
Yeah, it might be a little bit too soon to know exactly how they'd score it, because the Columbus region's never been, you know, designated quite yet. But I do know that, you know, when they look at it, the sentiment that I've heard reiterated on all of these calls with the U.S. EDA has really been, tell us the need in your region. Explain the need. They like to hear the story of what the need is. So they're not always necessarily just looking at the percentages and the figures. It's more about storytelling for the region as a whole.
Kind of related to that, as I mentioned before, Intel's had a huge impact on central Ohio and so on, and we have a township called Harlem Township, which is right next door to the Intel project. They're working on a strategic plan, hats off to them. You know, they recognize, they were a 4,000 population township, that their world changed dramatically in January, and they're working on a strategic plan, and they would like to have funding to help with development of the plan and maybe implementation of some of those components, because they're, you know, they're a real small township that has very limited funding. I mean, is that the sort of funding that could be made available?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. This is right in line with that. We've also been working with the state a little bit on trying to identify some resources for that, too. And even better, if we could see both, because one could match the other, right? So definitely a strategy. I can speak to Intel a little bit, too, in our planning relationship with ODOT on this. We had our first meeting with them to discuss this 20-minute, 40-minute, and 60-minute ring needs, and of course, you're in the 20-minute ring needs, and so that means the county engineer will be at the very first meetings of all of those conversations. And they just had, like, they've had their very first organizing call, like, about a week ago now. So I think we're going to see more come out of that. Certainly, William and I have been talking to Director Marchbanks, Director Mahalik, both, about the needs that we see that go beyond just the roads, right? So a lot of land use information. If we don't have accurate land use data, I may not be able to predict through our model what roadway needs are done. So just getting all that right is important, and so Harlem Township has to know these things, right?
Yeah, and I don't know that they do.
So we're very vested, I want to let you know personally, I'm very vested in making sure that each one of our communities gets what they need there, because if we don't, we're never going to be placing the investments in the right place.
Well, Harlem's more affected than, say, northeastern Leaking County because of proximity, and so sometimes geographical boundaries or artificial boundaries don't really...
Yeah, when they're that close. Bob Singer is a gentleman. He's a former trustee in Harlem Township. He's a gentleman who's leading this committee, and they've hired an expert to help with the process. And I've actually talked to Bob the other day and recommended that they reach out to MORPC because of a whole bunch of common goals and knowledge that you guys will have that they would really benefit from.
Bob Singer?
Bob Singer.
S-I-N-G-E-R?
Yep.
I'll send you his contact.
Thank you. That'd be great. Thank you. We will do the outreach.
Now, what about universities?
That's a great opportunity with the workforce dollars.
Yeah. You know, is funding available to universities to develop programs through the EDA, or is that more direct with Intel or through MORPC?
Well, through the EDA, there are certainly workforce support programs, and then they've had some special opportunities, too, that have come up, like, they had the Build Back Better Program, which was separate from the legal or the administrative work that was being done. And they, we didn't get anything through that, although we did apply. We worked with the three workforce districts in this area. Some of the feedback that I'm concerned about, I guess, is the fact that we need to be, I guess, more comprehensive. We really need to start thinking more comprehensively. I still, it wasn't like negative, it's just that making sure that we have all the colleges brought in and all the trades brought in. So I think we're going to definitely rework on that and get that back together. We've also been working with some advisors out of DC to give us good feedback, too, because, like you, we are also concerned that this region may not look like it deserves some of that, or has those needs, but we know that those needs are here, and we have plenty of people who can still have an opportunity to get ahead.
Okay, great. One last thing. We have an airport in the city of Delaware that is a great airport, great location, and they're, you know, we're working with them to develop a new mission for that airport, new structure. Is that sort of funding, or is that sort of initiative, because it is economic development related, is that eligible, if you will, for this type of funding as well?
Yes, and I would also consider U.S. Department of Energy in addition to the FAA funding and through ODOT. And I will add that, because that is because many of the new types of air mobility vehicles and stuff will have electric and hydrogen and other things. So there's definitely, if your plans are looking into the new, the newest in flight equipment, like, there might be some opportunities with the Department of Energy there, and that a lot of times has nothing to do with the financial footing of the locality. It's really about the technology and being driven to do the best airport facility. Also, ODOT and Drive Ohio with what they call Fly Ohio now, are you familiar with the advanced air mobility work that's happening? So they have a significant research into advanced air mobility, and we're the first state in Ohio to have an advanced air mobility framework, which these are vertical takeoff or short runway takeoff.
Oh, yeah.
So having facilities that you'll be able to leverage that into the future may garner you additional dollars, and some of those things could be universal. Some portion of that can be universal to the whole facility.
Okay.
Okay, it sounds, so we should be moving ahead on this, then. Is that our consensus? We can do, well, we can do a letter, and then, and if we need a resolution, too, we'll do that. So we'll check with our attorney.
Yeah, we'll need a resolution if we're going to do a letter.
A resolution?
You will need a resolution.
Okay. All right. We'll do a resolution. We're going to keep our clerk happy, and she'll keep us out of trouble.
Sounds like a good idea.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Miss Reese, thank you for your time.
Here's the number. I didn't have your phone number on my phone, so there you go.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, that's right. I'll be there.
Thank you so much.
And moving on, that brings us to administrative reports. Good morning again. Yesterday, I had the opportunity to go out to the Alpha Group facilities and meet with Liz Owens and get a tour and continue to learn more about their operation. I was familiar with it from my time on the Developmental Disabilities Board, but that was a good meeting. And then I also was able to participate virtually with the ODOT meeting this week on the Route 23 corridor. At this point, they're really just trying to reach out to local entities, governmental entities, as well as the local school districts to focus in on any particular safety concerns they have, or known or upcoming projects, and just talk about the corridor, and then they'll move out to the public phase where people can comment on the different sections of 23, and then make some recommendations in the future about improvements. That's all.
What kind of tennis do they have at these meetings?
Well, I was on the virtual one, so I couldn't see who was on there. I know that Columbus was on there. I think somebody from ODNR may have been on there. Those were the people commenting. I heard in the public meetings earlier, they had a pretty good turnout. I think some of you attended, and that they got good feedback. It's more of an open house style, so it was a little awkward virtually, but we got through it. That's all I have.
I just have a couple items. Yesterday, we had our kickoff meeting for the market study, and it was well-attended by the offices and departments that are participating. We met with a consultant, and they basically gave us an overview of the plan that they have in place to research the market for wages. And tomorrow and then next Tuesday, we will have individual meetings with the offices and departments, along with the consultants, to just talk about their specific concerns and so forth. So that is moving along, and we have our subco-renewal meeting tomorrow, which is a virtual meeting, so we will finalize or get the final numbers for 2023 health insurance. And then we'll have a lot of work to do between now and the end of September to determine the employee rates and so forth for 2023. But it's looking better than it did in the beginning, so we're happy about that. Just want to get those final numbers and be able to determine what we need to do moving forward. And, see, I think that's all. Thank you.
Okay. And I'll go first. I'd really like to thank our deputy, Monson, Darryl Monson, for being here on behalf of all of us. You are here, day in and day out, protecting us, and we so appreciate it, and owe you a great thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm surprised to get inside scoop of what's going on.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy, so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Merrill?
Well, having just returned from vacation, I don't have anything to offer today.
Just really, just one other thing. The MORPC Executive Committee meeting that Thea alluded to is this afternoon. I'll be going to that, and hopefully we'll talk more about the EDA and other initiatives for Delaware County. And I do have one other thing, and that is extremely important.
Oh.
This weekend, Ohio State and Notre Dame play the first game of the year, the top-five matchup. So I'm sure central Ohio will be well, will be watching it in massive numbers and rooting for the Bucks. So go Bucks!
Go Bucks, absolutely. One other thing, Prosecutor Shiffel organized a social media seminar yesterday, and there were over 100 people there, and our employees, heads of our different offices, and it was really very worthwhile. The, we, gosh, our attorney, the attorney that spoke kept us all in stitches for two hours, and that's pretty good. He had a great sense of humor, which made social media even more interesting, and so we're hoping to have him back for another session, and I'm not sure exactly when, but it was a great session, and thanks to our prosecutor for organizing it. Okay, we have need for executive.
We do. Resolution number 22-757, in the matter of journeying into executive session for consideration of employment and compensation of a public employee or public official for pending or imminent litigation.
Second?
Discussion.
Vote. Vote on motion 22-757. Mrs. Ellis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
We're now recessed into a